Monday, February the 20th. If you all stand for the pledge allegiance and then the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for invocation.
Let's pray. How grateful we are, oh God, for the gift of this day and this opportunity to celebrate and to give thanks for your faithful servants and to be called to do your work where we may faithfully listen to your spirit and discern the ways that we are to bring love and kindness, joy and peace into this world. Be with us as we speak and as we listen, as we share and as we discern, that in all things you may be glorified. In your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Let's see, first order. Is the, I need an approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed likewise. Motion carries. Motion on the minutes from our work session on February the 6th and then our meeting on, also February the 6th. Pages one through five, we've had a chance to read these. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. Thank you. Now's the public comments section. Does anybody wish to address us? David, go ahead.
I guess, I thought we was on agenda. But we aren't. Stuff, so. Anyway, while I'm here today, Commissioner, first Mr. Walker called me Saturday and said if I wasn't here today, we gonna lose our tax money, okay? So I'm here to go over resolution. And I just talked to Ms. Todd and she says we're not on agenda. Commissioner says that Mr. Carter's gonna go with resolution. I don't know. I just know what I tell.
Can you read that to them, Michael? Make sure we're all on the same page. Section three.
I'll read it all. We don't read sections. We read it all.
We'll read all.
So I have it.
I mean, you had a problem with giving me the addresses.
I got a problem giving you the addresses.
I mean.
I'll give Mr. Carter the addresses.
Well, give it to them, that's fine.
I'll give Ms. Todd the address.
Excuse me just a minute. This is public comments. That's for them to speak. We don't speak during public comments.
I'll give Mr. Carter the addresses or Ms. Todd anytime, but they're not to be handed out.
That's fine. I got no problem with that.
Okay, that's fine. That's, I'm gonna tell you the truth, folks. I've got some ladies on my department that says they'll quit before they let Commissioner Walker have their names and addresses. I mean, I give the names, but they don't want their phone numbers out. I understand that. Why would a, I'm the same age, old man want some young girl's address? I don't. No, I know they don't. So that's why we're here today. He called me Saturday.
You asked me to call you.
No.
On that paper you gave him, said call me.
If you need, you don't call on Saturdays of cussing me.
I didn't.
That's my time, nobody, and you'll never do it again. Never. I'm telling you, I'll go take papers before I put up with anybody cussing me on Saturday or Monday or any other day. I will not be cussed no more. I took one, I won't take the more. No, I'm done with that. I do this fire department, I come in here, I volunteer my damn time, I work my rear end off, and we got a damn good fire department, I'll put against anybody. And I ain't letting one person get out and cuss me and run the fire department down. He went to Four Brothers and got them rotten down when we come get a sandwich. Commissioner, that's a great commissioner. Yeah. You need to check his background, see if he's ever been charged with assault on female. Check it. Don't ask me, check it. But this here junk and him running that mouth about me, I'm tired of it. I worked for 25 years as chief out there, I mean 25 hard years. We got a dang on good department, them boys are good, they put their hearts into it, and then you got somebody says, if you HR, you won't get no more tax money, and I'll see to it. Well, I'm here, and that's why I'm here. And I'm just telling you, he called the mayor of Galax Racing Kane about us. Bobby Owen, did I put you on the phone with the chief of Galax?
Yes.
Yes, he did. And he told him all about it, all about it. Why is our fire commissioner calling Galax saying we can't come back down there? And if we did, then they'd have to pay for our fuel.
Senator, ma'am, I interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Your three minutes are up, but you've got an additional two minutes.
You just took 30 seconds, but I've got two people.
Keep going. You've got two more minutes.
But anyway, I just ain't putting up with it no more. It's bull crap, I ain't gonna be cussed. I'm just telling you, he cusses me again, I'll go up smart and take papers. I ain't threatening nobody harm, nothing like that, but I will not be cussed. I've worked hard for this little fire department and the little community, and the boys and the women out there does a good job, and I don't mind a bit giving neither one of you two the names, addresses and phone numbers, but they can't be handed out. Are we good with that?
I don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
And if I may, I just want to clarify one thing. Resolution that we keep talking about.
Mm-hmm.
All right. At the bottom of that resolution, and everybody knows it, if the board wishes for me to take 10 minutes to read this thing, I'll read it. But the only section that I'm identifying is at the bottom, and it does say that all members' addresses and telephone numbers must be given to the fire commission. It does say that. Now, what I will say as a result of that, this thing was done way back when.
2000 war.
There's a lot of things that don't relate to now's operations that may have related to then operations. So what I would suggest is we review and revise this thing to make it more up to date.
Exactly. Because I mean, if you want to get back to the resolution part of it, it says that the county's gonna help do the maintenance and maintain our trucks in section two on the front page, so. It says, can we offer finance for maintenance and operation of any qualified for financial assistance? We all qualify for financial assistance, which means the county would have to assist in keeping the trucks up now, even though we have a fire tax. I don't think any departments come up here and ask for financial assistance since fire tax come in.
I think there's been requests in the past for contingencies amount.
Contingency, that, but I don't mean above the fire tax.
No.
Yeah. I mean, all this stuff's outdated. It needs to be set down, it needs to be gone over. I mean, I'm 100% with that. But when I've got people that says they will not, they'll quit before they give their information out, well, I'm representing them, and I don't want to lose them. Firefighters are hard to come by, and I just don't want to lose firefighters over someone that's trying to cause trouble in the apartment anyway. So that's where we're at. I'll be glad, Ms. Todd or Mr. Carter, either one, to bring you that paper, no problem. If you all good with that.
David, you're, we've gone over your five minutes. You've got.
Bobby, I apologize, but I didn't come for the five. I was told to be here, I'd lose my money, okay? So.
And you had three other people, that's why we gave you the extra two minutes.
Yeah.
And we appreciate your comments and your concerns, and we, I think we've all listened to them, is there is an option on the table for the board to decide if you want to give the speaker additional time.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chair. Let's get it out in the open.
And I would check with Heather, would three minutes meet that requirement?
I think that's up to the board, so.
I appreciate it. Thank y'all very much, but I mean, that's the main thing.
Wait just a minute. So with the motion and the second, we need to approve the additional three minutes for David to speak under public comments, and I would ask that the board not interrupt him and let him finish his speech. All those in favor say aye. Raise your hand, aye. Opposed likewise. Motion carries four oh. Go ahead, David.
Okay, I just want, I just want to appreciate your time. I really do. Thank you very much. But some of this nitpick stuff's gotta stop, and like we're talking about this resolution, we do need to sit down. That's 2001 Eldon Edwards Charity Gamble, Ken Ritson was on this, and there've been a lot of changes since then, very lot. But this, this nitpicking over little Glacier Creek Fire Department's got to end. We got a good fire department, they work hard, anytime anybody needs them, they're here, and it's just, I don't understand what's going on. He talk about our books, our books is available anytime. If y'all want a third party, H&R Block does our books. They're supposed to be good, they're all over the country. I don't know. You know, I'm not a book person, but H&R Block does their books, they give you a 990, and I have no idea about the books, but Tina Evans, she's our treasurer, and H&R Block does our books, and if anybody wants to see them, or, you know, they're there. There's no secrets. We get tax money, we spend tax money, but we do a lot of running too. We run lots and lots of calls, and a lot of things nobody sees. And they say now everything needs to go through dispatch. I 100% agree and 10% disagree. If we're gonna get a cat out of a tree and there's a fire coming out of Panda Creek, I don't see we need to tie up radio time for a cat in a tree. I mean, I just, there's some common sense rules here, people. There really is. And common sense is where it comes back to. Everything ain't perfect in this world. We do the best we can. We're not perfect people. There's only one man that walked this earth that's perfect, and that's Jesus Christ. And they, some people didn't like him. You believe that? Some people did not like Jesus Christ, and some people don't even go to church today because they don't believe in him. But I do, I go to church and I love the Lord. And the Lord's what makes Glacier Creek Fire Department what it is. We give every bit of credit to the Lord. He's the man that makes Glacier Creek Fire Department what he is, not no mirrors, not nobody else. We're one minute and done, and I'm done, amen. Thank you, Bobby, I'm out of here.
Thank you for those comments. They'll be noted. Is there anybody else on public comments that would like to speak at this time? Yes.
Can I, I'm just, I'm not gonna take that.
Yeah, there's three minutes, if you need.
That's fine, I'm not gonna take it. My name's Jerry Loggins, and I am the vice president of the board of directors of Glacier Creek Volunteer Fire Department, and I represent the fire department, I represent David, and there's nothing wrong with that fire department. I, just like David said, we invite you to look at the books, do whatever. We've been investigated, in the last five years, I estimate, we've been investigated by three different organizations from Raleigh, and none of them has found anything. So, and as a board member, I encourage you all to look at what's going on and to, and I'm not saying nothing bad about Mr. Walker, I'm not. I don't know Mr. Walker, don't know nothing about it, but you county commissioners don't need to be calling the individual on the phone unless it's emergency, unless something's wrong or something like that. You all are professionals, you got channels for communicating to this fire department. And I'm sure if Mr. Walker needs David, he can get a hold of Drew. Drew emails the fire department all the time, I monitor it. But there's no need to call and harass David, there's none. I mean, there's none. And we want it from now on, any conversation that goes on, we want it on record. And that's one reason we don't want phone calls. We want conversations between you all and this fire department on record. Now, thank you, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any public comments to make at this time? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public comments section. We move on to presentations to the board, and I believe that's Ms. April Hale.
Good morning.
Morning.
This month, for the HR recognition report, we do have a long-term employee that's gonna be retiring March the 1st. Linda Edwards has announced her retirement as EMS director. Linda actually started working for the county October 31st, 1994. She has 28 and a half years of service with Allegheny County, and we want to express our appreciation for that. And if Linda, you'll come up here for just a second. Linda actually started her career with the county in the finance office, and during several times over the years, she's actually filled in at the finance office being short of staff. She's served on several boards. I have served with her on the community transportation advisory board for probably 20 years. So she's gonna be missed. I will personally say that she's a friend. I appreciate her professionalism and everything that she has done to help me and transportation, I will say that too. I'm gonna be Ms. Linda. Thank you.
I've got a plaque for Linda, but first of all, do we have to accept her resignation or her retirement?
Well, she has your time, Ann.
Shucks. But I would like to read this. It's an appreciation to Linda Edwards for 28 years of dedicated service to Allegheny County dated today, February the 20th, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I wish you weren't leaving.
Thank you.
A few con words, please.
It has been a privilege to work for Allegheny County for all these years. To put it in perspective, my son was seven when I started working for the county, and he's 35. So, yeah, and he couldn't be here today, he lives too far away, but I do appreciate you all, everyone I've worked with during the years, the employees at EMS, the department heads I've worked with. It's made it an enjoyable job.
Thank you.
And I know we have a few department heads and some staff that came this morning. Anybody want to say anything to Linda? Just wanted to give you that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our facility report, David Spicer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate this opportunity to come and report to you. We've been busy. Right now, we have a few projects that's ongoing and some that's completed. As you noticed, the generator was sitting here at the last commissioners' meeting. It is now up, running and ready to go if the power was to fail from the power company side. So it's up and going and ready to go. The transfer facility, we have new tires on the catapult loader, so those have been taken care of. We have a contract for the temporary tipping floor, we're waiting on the supplies from the contractor to show up so that those things can be started and taken care of as quickly as possible. We did not have any co-mingle or cardboard, however, this week there'll probably be a load per day, so we've got quite a bit to do. We did have a couple loads of scrap metal at 9.14 tons, which yielded $1,845.90 for the county. Ninety South Main, we have that underway, and that's gonna begin the 20, March the 1st, the 24th will be the day that we do some moving and relocating of some staff. So that'll be the 24th, which is this Friday, and then next week, on Wednesday, the demolition should begin. The jail, we had a little problem with hot water, with a leak there in the mixing valve. We finally did find one at a reasonable price, so that is, it came in Friday, and we're making arrangements today to do that, to change out tomorrow, because we'll have to have the water off to the entire building. So we're making arrangements for that, so that should be fixed tomorrow. The health department, we are gonna be underway pretty soon for that remodel, so look for some construction work going on over at the health department. It's gonna get a facelift somewhat on the inside, and it's gonna get a new roof and some HVAC units, and this is done for the health department, by the health department. They applied for the money, they received the money, and all that is being taken care of through that grant that they received. So we're very thankful for those folks making an effort to assist us in those things. We did have a little bit about with some ice, so we got that started before work time, got it started melting and some of it removed before actual work time. We used about 2,500 pounds of salt for the parking lots and 150 pound of salt for the sidewalks, so as you know, the sidewalk salt's a little special, it's chemical composition, so it doesn't harm the concrete, so. But we had that underway and taken care of, so that went smoothly. Animal control, as of today, we've had five assists with the sheriff's department, we've had two dogs and livestock, nine well checks, two dogs and/or cats picked up, three running at large, four attacks, three trapped, and that is dogs and cats, with a total of 96 hours, 68 calls and 651 miles driven. So, easy again. I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions. John, go ahead.
What was the cost for the tires for the loader?
A little over $17,000.
Did that bust our budget? How long do they usually last?
We, when the fellow that I talked to at Free Tire Service, he said he'd had a set on the loader for the last 15 years, and they were still good.
Okay. So we're looking about $1,000 a year that we need to.
Roughly.
Roughly, around in there. Have we hooked up in the equipment room in the BDC yet?
No, they're still waiting on contractor.
All the questions I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle and Greg, no questions. David, could you explain the assist with the sheriff's department for animal control? Just what does that involve?
The sheriff's department, if they go and make an arrest, let's say, and the owner has animals inside the house and they're arresting that individual, then that animal that's there would be left alone. So they call us and we come get the animal, so that the animal's not left in the house alone is one, is one thing. Other things may be DOAs or something of that nature. It's just where we go and help them, they take care of the folks and we take care of the animal.
John.
Just to elaborate on that, what people of the county may not realize, but a few years ago, the sheriff's department made an arrest. Animal control was not present, and if I remember correctly, there were two dogs that were left running wild. A neighbor took pity on the dogs, went over, and she was attacked and spent roughly, I believe, a week to 10 days in the hospital and required extensive plastic surgery. That is why animal control will go whenever there's animals involved on an arrest, because we were wide open liability-wise, especially whenever this event happened. Fortunately, nothing came of it other than that this lady suffered quite a bit and is permanently scarred for the rest of her life for being a humanitarian. That explains why we do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for David? Michael?
I don't have a question, I just have a further explanation. The question came up about the tires for the loader. First of all, this is the secondary machine, so it is not the primary machine. As we all know, the deficiencies that's been identified with it, sometimes this is the primary machine. But the number of hours would be reduced first and foremost. And the reason the cost for these tires, these are foam-filled tires. You know, you can't run pneumatics in a transfer station because all you'll have is flat tires the whole time. So the reference that David is talking about with the individual saying he had them for 15, somebody had them for 15 years, you're probably looking at the individual that bought the last set that lasted that long, because, you know, we had the same equipment, and these tires will most likely exceed that loader's life if you really want the honesty of it.
I just wanted to point out, it is an additional expense that we've got that is hanging out there, and with the price of petroleum, let's say that 17 years down the line, if that loader's still working, it'd probably be three times that cost.
We actually got them cheaper than the original, I think by what, $4,000?
It was, yeah. We saved about four, between $4,000 and $5,000 by buying the foam-filled pneumatic tires versus the solid tires.
It's just, it's just the things that we can't plan on. We don't know in the future when we're gonna need them. We don't know how much it's gonna cost at that time, so it's just one of the challenges of running a government agency. But thank you for what you do. Please pass to your workers, the county appreciates it. We know they don't get a lot of thanks, but they sure do get a lot of cussings.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, David. Next is finance, finance report, April Hale.
Good morning again. Your monthly finance report, you have a copy. Year-to-date revenue, $15,312,340. That represents about 83% of the approved budget. Year-to-date expenditures, $11,593,405. That represents about 63% of the approved budget. And the approved budget, $18,412,892, and we are 63% into that budget, seven and a half months. So we're right on target with the expenditures. Balance as of today, the total is $21,45,112.98, but I have broken that down. But I have broken that down for you. The 15.9 is in the checking, and then the 5.1 is in the savings account that the board approved last month, the public fund savings account. Bank balance as of a year ago, a year ago in '22, $14,156,966.50. And bank balance two years ago, $9,650,668.92. Our net financials, taking into account those revenue and expenditures for the year is $3,718,935. And then I have our audited fund balance for fiscal year '22, $9,67,926. Can I answer any questions about this portion of the report?
Any questions? Go ahead, Michelle.
In the savings account, what kind of interest rate do we get on that?
3%. And if it goes up or down, if it fluctuates any, they will give me a notice before anything happens with that. So I should be able to report that monthly if there's any change to that. Second page. Second page is your sales tax report, actually, the second and the third page. Year-to-date local option sales tax, $694,023.59. A year ago this time, $581,595.78. So it's about $113,000 ahead this year. And then the last page is the local option sales tax, the Article 46, the quarter cent. Year-to-date is now $63,671.15. December's allocation coming in was a little over $31,000. Any questions about sales tax?
Questions?
That's on the quarter cent sales tax year-to-date?
Yes, yes. That started in October.
Anything else? Michael?
Thank you, sir. It's a good report.
It's a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Chris Miller to talk about security, I think more specifically on TikTok.
Chairman Irwin asked me to present the report on TikTok after all the bans and whatnot, give you all a little more information about it. TikTok, the article we have is a very basic article on TikTok and a little bit about it, and I'll be covering a little more in detail what's going on with that. TikTok is a social media platform for creating, sharing, and discovering short videos. The app is used by young people as an outlet to express themselves through singing, dancing, comedy, and lip syncing, and allows users to create videos and share them across the community. The app has been downloaded 1.5 billion times worldwide, and about a third of its active monthly users are believed to be teenagers. TikTok users can sign up the phone number, email address, or a third-party account like Facebook or Instagram. Once logged in, you can search popular creators, categories, or hashtags to find videos. TikTok was launched in 2016 by the Chinese company BotDance, which has faced criticism from government officials who say the app gives China access to American data, making it a security risk. The app's already been banned on state-issued devices in 28 states, and is facing a blanket ban across all federal employees that would prohibit them from using or downloading TikTok on government-owned devices. President Joe Biden signed a $1.7 trillion omnibus spending bill last month, which included a measure to ban the app on all executive-grade devices, but it not apply Congress and its staffers. FBI Director Christopher Wray warned the US federal government that China could be using TikTok to control or influence user's devices. He took on the subject at the Josh Rosenthal Education Fund lecture last month, telling students that FBI has national security concerns about TikTok, saying it gives the Chinese government the potential to leverage the app in ways I think should concern us. Wisconsin and North Carolina have become the latest states to ban use of TikTok on state phones and other devices, a move that comes nearly half of the states nationwide have blocked the popular social media app owned by a Chinese company. Democratic Governor Tony Evers ordered the ban after he consulted with the FBI and emergency management officials. He said it had potential risks to privacy, safety, and security. Evers' order applies to most state agencies, with some exceptions, like criminal investigators who may be using the app to attract certain people. Defending our state's technology and cybersecurity infrastructure and protecting digital privacy will continue to be a top priority, Evers tweeted when he announced the ban. North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper cites similar concerns. "It's important for us to protect state information technology from foreign countries that have actively participated in cyber attacks against United States," Cooper said. "Protecting North Carolina from cyber threats is vital to ensuring the safety, security, privacy, and success of our state and its people." One of the most vital aspects of TikTok has been policy concerns with questions like, "What data does TikTok collect?" and "Does TikTok steal your information?", regularly circulating online. Like many other social media accounts, such as platforms like Facebook, TikTok collects a lot of information about its users, including every TikTok video you watch for any hang-on forum, the entire contents of every message you send through the app, since messages are not encrypted, your country, location, internet address, and type of device you're using. Another concern surrounding TikTok is where user information is stored. The TikTok website states, "We store TikTok user, US user data within the United States, with backup redundancy in Singapore. Our data centers are located entirely outside of China, and none of our data is subject to Chinese law." Their EU privacy policy includes a question, "Where we store your personal data?", which says, "The personal data we collect from you will be transferred to and stored at destination outside of the European Economic Area." There's no other specific information on the TikTok website regarding where your data is stored. Related to this, TikTok has published their first-ever transparency report, which details legal requests for user information, government requests for content removal, copyrighted content takedown policies. It's available in India, the United States, and Japan, were the top three countries, respectively, where user information was requested. The United States was the number-one country with fulfilled requests, with 86% of the number-one country in terms of number of accounts specified in their requests. New analysis by Australian Social Security Forum Internet 2.0 has found TikTok requests almost complete access to the contents of phones while the app is in use. That data includes calendar, contact lists, and photos. Appearing on ABC News, Internet 2.0 co-founder and co-CEO Robert Potter explained that he and his team pulled apart the app's source code to assess how exactly it was functioning on a phone. "When we did that, we saw the permission layer, and the phone was requesting significantly more than what they said that they were doing publicly. When the app was in use, it has the ability to scan the entire hard drive, access the contact list, as well as see all other apps that have been installed on the device." Potter reckons these permissions are significantly more than what social media sites need access to, and those permissions include access to camera, the microphone, device's Wi-Fi connection, and full contact list on the device, determine if the internet is available and access it, keep the device turned on and automatically start itself when the device restarts, secure detailed information on the user's location using GPS and other apps that are running, read and write to the device's storage, install or remove shortcuts, access the flashlight, request additional installation packages. The research has been talking about proving TikTok is harvesting data. Potter said that because Internet 2.0 can only see part of how the app is functioning, it does not have visibility of what's been pulled exactly. All he can say is that TikTok grants itself the permission to pull that data. He said when Internet 2.0 races into TikTok, they weren't clear what exactly they were redeeming those permissions for, but they are there, and it's alarming. The thing is, you just give the app permission to do this, but they're basically forced to in order to be able to use the app. It also isn't totally clear what conditions you're signing up for. In the February 2020s, when TikTok was becoming a household name, the company told an Australian Senate Select Committee that the personal data it collects from all the users is stored on servers located in the United States and in Singapore. "We have strict controls around security and data access. TikTok has never shared Australian user data with the Chinese government nor sent it to Australian financial at its request," the company told the committee as part of its inquiry into foreign interference through social media. But Potter said his company's problem with TikTok also is how the app communicates with the rest of TikTok's infrastructure. "Under close examination, we saw connecting two servers around the world, including in China," he said. TikTok's support claims, Potter said, "It isn't clear what exactly is being attempted to China, only that the phone regularly connects to servers in China." Potter and Internet 2.0 threw over a dozen cybersecurity paralax at the app, and every single time, saw the app connecting servers in China. "For the TikTok application to function properly, most of the access and the device to collection is not required, forces in conclusion, but the application can and will run successfully without any of this data being gathered." It's led us to believe the only reason this information is gathered is for data harvesting. In response, TikTok told Gesmond Australia that the app is not unique in the amount of information it collects. In fact, it is less than many popular mobile apps. "In line with industry practices, we collect information that the users choose to provide us, and information that helps the app function, operate securely, and improve the user's experience," a TikTok spokesperson added regarding the phone access claims. The spokesperson also said that TikTok user data is stored in Singapore and the US, and the company has been clear and vocal about employing access controls like encryption and security monitoring to secure user data with access approval per process overseen by its US-based security team. "The IP addressed in Singapore, the network traffic does not leave the region, and is categorically unsuited to imply there's communication with China," TikTok said. The researchers' conclusions reveal fundamental misunderstandings about how mobile apps work, and by their own admission, they do not have the correct testing environment to confirm their basis claims. "At the center of concerns are the TikTok privacy practices and claims of invasive privacy issues keep piling up. Significant reports indicate the data and data collection's practice outpace anything that Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter have ever imagined. It is quite plausible that the Chinese government has access to and leverage to collect all this accumulated data. Meanwhile, TikTok is profusely collecting data such as large-scale, it's raised alarms across the world that resulted in an official Apple research announcement outlining how TikTok deliberately spies on its users, an outright ban for U.S. military personnel using the app due to it being a cyber threat. A call from the SEC to ban TikTok entirely ended up taking privacy advocate concerns." No, no, that's a lot.
Questions? John?
Just one question. You said that the governor had said no TikTok?
On state, yes, sir.
So your recommendation is we also exclude it on county phones?
Yes, sir.
We'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Michelle, any comments? This item is not up for vote at this time. We would...
I would make a motion that we place it on the next meeting agenda so that we can take official action, Mr. Chair.
We can certainly do that, move that to the next, the March nighttime meeting. Mr. Carter, what's our, do we have any type of policy right now for April or for you about this TikTok? And, you know, looking at Chris's excellent explanation with Governor Cooper's Executive Order 276 to ban TikTok use on government phones, government devices in North Carolina, and with Joe Biden's, also with his federal ban on TikTok downloading, I would agree with John, Michelle, and Greg that we place this on our next agenda and have a little discussion and vote on it at that time. There's no other questions. Thank you, Chris. Great report. Appreciate it. Next, we go to general business. Scott Stoker.
Good morning, Board. The reason I'm here is I'm representing the Department of Juvenile Justice, and this is just a resolution for support for our department. So to let you all know what's going on, we've not had, our detention facilities, which we use Alexander right now, it'll say, you might hear where it talks about Catawba, but Catawba's been shut down. So if we have a young person under the age of 18 that commits a criminal offense, they go to Alexander Juvenile Detention Facility right now. The state has part of the budget, you all pay part of the amount. We're not able to keep them funded. I mean, people in the facilities. We've got court counselors, which is what our titles are, working in the facilities now. Matter of fact, it is to the point that sadly, we have one lady going this month, and I think in April, I'm going to have to go all the way to Butler and work for a week to try to cover, because these young kids are in a facility, and it's not there. So this resolution is asking about, would y'all help support our department to push through to the legislation to, for a raise and increases? Because we've got people that's been there for 20 years, myself is 28 years, and pretty much making the same thing as somebody coming in a year behind us. It's fallen all the way down to the court counselors. We are three that short now, right now. So that's all this is. It doesn't cost the county anything, it's just a resolution saying that y'all do support our department to go in front of the legislation and say, you know, there should be step increases, and we do need to be more competitive. And I know y'all are running the exact same thing with the jails and everything here, too. I mean, it's a, sadly, it's a government problem that it's hard to compete with the businesses today. Like I said, we're down about 30% at capacity right now in our facilities, as in stat, staff. That's pretty much it, guys. I was, like I said, that's all this is, and you can read it. Do you have any questions or anything?
Questions? John?
I have no questions, just a statement.
Yes, sir.
One of the problems that people are not aware of is one of the most underfunded departments in the state of North Carolina is the Justice Department. There are rape kits that are six and eight years old that have never been tested in the state lab. Whenever I was looking for a job in Wilmington, North Carolina, I was actually hired by the prison system. But I got a job as a guard at Matsu, making twice the money. There is no such thing as overtime in these facilities. You get clock time, which means that you can't, you don't make it up. You're not, the pay raises have not been there, you're basically working for half what you should be, but the state of North Carolina does not, just simply has not put the money in there. One of the reasons why, whenever you read the paper, that someone has been convicted of an offense and they're not going to prison, is because we haven't driven, we have not built any prison facilities. We've closed them. We're lacking in mental health facilities, youth facilities. What we don't realize in this county, but if you were living in Charlotte, Raleigh, Durham, the cartels and the organized crime organizations are recruiting young kids because they know they won't go to jail. They're doing the carjackings. They are doing the robberies and things of this nature, and this just precipitates on down. We live in a little old bitty county where we don't have the major crime problems, where you do not know what is going on in the other areas. J.B. Boyer, whenever his father was in the hospital and was in a last illness, parked his vehicle in Forsyth County. They broke 12 windows in the cars in the parking lot that had an armed guard so that they could, he had a pistol in his pickup. They got his pistol. How many others' windows that were broken had a weapon in the vehicle? You don't know. This is what's going on, and we are not doing anything. A 26, I believe you said 26% staffing?
36%.
36%. Thirty-six percent. What we've got to look at is the two-thirds that are picking up the slack where those one-third are not available to do the job. Now, we can't vote on this, but I will make a recommendation, Mr. Chair, that we place it on the agenda for the next meeting and that we support you and what you're doing every which way that we can. Thank you, sir.
And I'll address regarding what's in detention. It has changed, and we have picked up 16 and 17-year-olds since that. So we, I have some coworkers that actually is working Alexandra and working their full-time job also. So last, about a month ago, I actually had one young man in the facility, and I went down there. So that is a 28-bed facility. It was at max capacity. Eleven of those kids were sitting there for first-degree murder. So that's the difference of what we are looking at compared to before. I mean, and, and it is hard. So now you're taking, so like I said, when I leave for a week to go to Butler to cover facility because the kids are in facility, I'm out of this county for a week. So our kids who are here are not having anyone here. Law enforcement, yeah, they can call me, but still, somebody's want to come up to help do the paperwork if they need some charge in the middle of the night or whatever's going on. So that's all we're asking, is just the support. And I, we totally appreciate everything y'all have done and putting it all. Any other questions or anything?
Michelle, any comments, Greg, comments?
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Next, Michael Carter on jail mill contracts.
Mr. of the Board, it's that time of year again, I guess is how it started out. But Commissioner Greg, since, since you weren't here the last time, we, we currently have a jail mills agreement with G.B. Wagner Group. And that was originally done back 23rd of February of '22, so we're pretty close. And it was for a year. So that agreement or consideration of, of this agreement or some addendums to the agreement or any portion of the contract itself is, is coming due. I've communicated with, with Heather, and I certainly defer to her, but there, there is a provision in the current agreement that allows for this current agreement to continue to operate under, and it, and the wording says, "The terms and conditions of this contract shall apply to apply as long as Wagner continues to provide services hereunder to the county after the expiration or termination of this contract and before a new agreement is reached." So, and I'll certainly let Heather, the summary is, we have the ability to continue under this until we either reach a new contract or we, we decide whichever route we wish to go in. That is all dependent upon his, I guess, acceptance of doing that, which we have no reason to believe that, that he wouldn't at this point. But we have been in communication with, with he also, so we're all working towards finding a resolution. This is just to notify the board today that it is coming due. We will work on this as we continue onward and eventually bring forth what information we need to, to further the agreement.
Any questions about that? We'll, we'll be into this later on in the year.
I would, I would suspect that you're, that you're, one of your next March meetings, we'll come back with some thoughts about it.
Thank you. Any questions, Greg? It's, that concludes our general business. We'll move to the consent agenda. Rita, do you have anything to add at the consent agenda? I would move for a motion in a second.
Move.
All those in favor, signify, raise your hand. Carries four O, thank you. Now, for move to general business, these items will require a vote. First off is the reappointment of the county accessory. Is that Rita? Yes, ma'am?
The reap, reappraisal happens every four, well, four years for me. My last term expires March the 7th of 2023, and the appointment can be anywhere from one to four years.
A motion to reappoint for four years, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Likewise, for me. Motion carries four O. You're still up.
Thank you for that vote of confidence. Next was the reappraisal or revaluation schedule for the board's consideration. I gave, brought forth information at your last meeting about what the Department of Revenue's recommendation was, what our ratios we're doing at this time. Lot of information I provided to you, so a lot of nighttime reading there probably. I just need to know how the board wishes to proceed, if you want to advance the revaluation schedule based upon the D O R information, or if you prefer to stay on our six-year schedule.
Discussion, any questions, John? Comments?
The only comment that I have is what we are in. I would like for the other board members to take this into consideration. Right now, we're on a six-year schedule, are we not?
Correct.
I just, just, I just did some figuring. If we maintain 5% inflation at this time, and I think that's going to be a little bit low, because in the past year, we've had 9%. If I had a property and it was valued at $200,000, at the end of six years with inflation at 5% a year, that property, new property value would be $268,000. Which means that my tax bill, six years later, is going to be pretty doggone substantial. If, and I think we ran into this in the last appraisal period, there were a lot of citizens that were complaining, my, how many times did you hear, "If you think that my property's worth this much, buy it." You smile.
Fairly common.
The audience cannot see that. But with 28% of our population on fixed incomes, retirees, you know, we wait five years, we've got a relatively small tax burden coming in, and then all of a sudden, it jumps. It hurts because I'm not taking that into account. To lessen that, of course, it's going to be increased cost to the county. If we go to a four-year, whenever that property value goes up, it hurts a little bit less whenever you look at it, in my opinion. So I would recommend that we go to a four-year schedule, and hopefully, we could reduce the sticker shock whenever reappraisals come up. Now, on the other side of that, if property values go down, devaluation, which I don't believe is going to be happening anytime soon, the county would, would have that benefit also. You know, the county can have sticker shock if we have devaluation of land prices and things of that nature. Fortunately, I believe North Carolina statute states that the county commissioners don't have to vote for a tax increase. If that happens, it would be an automatic tax increase to make up for the shortfall. So we've got it easy up here in that regard. But I would recommend that we take that into consideration, a four-year reappraisal. Okay, Mr. Chair?
Michelle?
I see where John's coming from on this, but, you know, it costs the county a lot of money to do a reevaluation, and that gives us two more years. And there is a possibility that, you know, this, this bubble's going to burst sometime, and I would be in favor of leaving it at the six-year mark.
Thank you.
Greg? I see where John's coming from, but everybody I talk to wants to go back to eight-year on it. All I got to say about it.
You know, there's a lot of ifs in these statements that come from the, from the state, what their recommendations are. I don't know that they've taken into consideration of how COVID affected us. I don't know that just because the house value, the land value, or commercial value may go up, may not go up. I don't know anybody has that crystal ball to, you know, to project that into the future. I, I like the six-year valuation. The, I understand John's point that the taxes could increase or the evaluations could increase, but who's to say that they might not decrease? I, I just don't know that. I just, I like it, it's six years. I basically know what I'm going to be paying. I think a lot of people know what they're going to be paying, looking at the makeup of this board for the next several years. I've heard no appetite from any commissioner about raising taxes. Our financial situation is, is extremely good right now. There again, though, we can't project what's going to happen. Some major catastrophe could, could fall upon us, but we, we have a cushion right now to, to address something like that. So I'm of the opinion, I like the six-year evaluation. This, this item is up for action. And so if there's no other comments, I would need a, a motion in a second to, I think, what you're asking for, to stay where we are.
Whatever the board determines they want to do is, is what I need to know at this time, so.
Make a motion, leave it the way it is.
Second. Although, any questions, any discussion?
Just to clarify, it's six years is what we're voting on.
Michael Carter, please.
Yeah, just one, one comment or question. In doing this, we're all in the same situation, but, but I would ask for clarification in leaving it at the six-year. And I think Rita, you, you talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, that you presented the information. There is a recognized deficiency that, that the county will identify. If you'd like to hear that again, just for clarification, so be it. If not, if you know it, okay. But I, I do think that you have, you have to take that along with the vote, recognizing that there is a deficiency in that amount.
Does the, the recommendation for the vote need to include that language?
I just think that, that if it comes up in, in the next five to six years, you're safe when you say that, yes, we realize there was a deficiency and this is what we did to address it.
At, for a comment, at one time, we were writing out what we were voting on exactly on the board, so everybody knew. Since last few meetings, we haven't been writing out what we're voting on. So who needs to clarify the language for this vote?
I'm only mentioning the fact that by adhering to continuing with the six-year assessment, that there is a recognized deficiency on the county's part. If, if you do not wish for that to be included in the motion, so be it. But I do think it's important to identify that by staying with this, there is a recognized deficiency.
And the percentage.
With that caveat, that can be in the minutes, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second to stay at the six years where we are with Michael, county managers, Michael Carter's recommend, uh, statement for the minutes to recognize the deficiency. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise. Motion carries. One more, Rita.
So the next item we need to decide on are the dates for our Board of Equalization and Review hearings, and this is where property owners, taxpayers can bring any appeal of value to the Board of Equalization and Review to be heard. How many have you had here?
I've had 13. I've heard back from one.
So we've had 13 appeals. Now, that's not saying all 13 will come to the board.
Dates are you recommending?
I don't really have a recommendation. We usually do Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we usually start at 6 o'clock. They can be as early as the first Monday in April, but must conclude by the first Monday in May.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I seem to be a dark cloud today for some reason. Rita, this, this board historically has been the Board of Commissioners.
Correct.
The ability exists for it to be a separate board, correct?
Yes.
Don't know if there's any appetite for that, and don't know the timeframes associated with even implementing such, but I did want to bring that up just for information or if you'd like to expand on that.
Sure. After you and I discussed that, I looked into it a little bit further, and we could not do that for this year because we do have to have our plan or resolution sent to the state for approval. But if the board were to decide to go to a separate Board of Equalization and Review, each board member can appoint themselves or another person. Of course, it should be someone who, you know, knows something about the real estate market and, and law and, and things of that nature, but that's how that would work.
But we can't do that this year.
We, we can't do it this year, and of course, it would be a, that, that would be more question, I guess, for finance and things, but it would be a paid board. I've not looked into that compensation part of it or whatever.
So just for information, if that was a consideration, when would that action need to take place in order to prepare the board for that if they desire?
Uh, well, I would need that to be determined before we start budget process for next year. So by the end of the year, I think would be a good time to make that decision.
End of fiscal year.
End of fiscal year, yes.
Just for clarification and knowledge of our new board members, there will be training available. It would usually online training.
Yes.
So that it can give you the guidelines of what you can and cannot do as a commissioner whenever we do these revaluations. And it is boring, but you get a lot of information out of it.
And as soon as that training becomes available, I'll share that with the board members as well.
I believe you said there's 13 right now?
Teresa's had 13 that she has went out and reviewed and waiting to see.
And historically, I think that number shrinks with time. Now, this meeting, we just have to have three commissioners present.
Three commissioners, yes.
So in the past, we've sort of taken turns, instead of having all five, it's usually three or four. But I think that's where we stand, Michael.
And, and just to follow up, if, if, if an alternate board is something to be considered, I guess I would ask the board to, you know, we could put that on an agenda sometime in May or some, sometime before the end of the fiscal year, if that is something that you want to expand or talk more about. If not, we don't need to do it, but I did, I did want to throw that option out there.
I think with that statement for, for Drew to look at the mid-month or you wanted the first of April, mid-month?
Mid-month works better, whichever month it is.
Put that at the mid-month meeting?
For March.
For April.
April or May, just sometime before the end of the fiscal year.
We did in June.
Make that note. So what you're asking for, have you set any hard dates yet, though?
That's just what I'm asking, asking the board for here tonight.
If I may, Mr. Chair, how complicated are the 13 that we're looking at right now? It's just opening shuts? I would recommend, Mr. Chair, that we look at, starting at the first week in April, and schedule throughout the month of April, because we can always cancel if we get through. Well, we can't cancel, because somebody could pop up and put in a, you know.
We have to have an adjournment date. And any meetings after that have to be advertised in the paper and things like that. But two evenings will be sufficient.
We've got to do it sometime in April.
Yes.
Tuesdays and Thursdays. How does everybody's calendar look for April the 10th? That's a Monday. I thought we said Tuesday.
Said Tuesday and Thursday.
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Normally done Tuesdays and Thursdays, but Monday is fine.
That is Easter Monday, according to my TikTok here. barring unforeseen medical appointments, and this is at night, so if I'm alive, I should be available at any time, Mr. Chair.
Phil? What was the date?
Phil? 11th, 13th, 18th, 20th, 25th, and 27th. Those dates are good with me. Right. Good with Greg. So you've got possible dates in?
The 11th and the 13th?
11, 13.
We just need two.
As of right now, I can be there both. Let's go for the 11. Does that work for you?
That's fine, yes.
6:00?
6:00.
I do not want anything on the 18th, because that's federal tax day. They're going to have a bad taste in their mouth to begin with. 11, 13, 6:00, 6:00 PM, in this room.
Yes, sir.
So we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion for them two dates.
Second. A motion and second, here in discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise. Motion carries. That finishes Rita Miller. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Madam Goldfinger. Next is Davis Field Scoreboard, Randy.
Morning, everyone. On the scoreboard, I don't know exactly what the date was that that Davis Field was done. But this is the original scoreboard that was airing over time. Between the weather and all, we really need to have a new scoreboard, because it hasn't actually been operating in the last couple of years. For one, where the press box sits at now, if you're in there operating scoreboard, you can't really even hear what the umpire's calling. With the new scoreboard, is a wireless. So you can be sitting in the stands, or you could be in the concession stand if you wanted to, and still operate this scoreboard, which should relieve some maintenance items, because that's what you call hardware. So the wire comes through the middle field to the press box. And so only wire you've got is the actual power wire going to the press box, because everything else is on a antenna. Don't have to have Wi-Fi. Basically, same thing, the high school baseball, high school football field scoreboard runs off of. But you do have a set known frequency, that you have to be on your own frequency. I do have three quotes. And one that I, the company, I guess, that I'm recommending is Nevco. They're local, well, as local as we can get. They're out of Statesville, the rep is. So as far as any items, problems that we may have, and we need to call somebody, you know, we're calling an hour and 15 minutes away for somebody to get here. And the other item is the weight. Nevco sign weighs 90 pounds, the other two is double that. And the Nevco sign is made out of aluminum, not metal. Warranties, all that stuff is same. There's no difference in one or the other, as far as that goes. And this is totally no cost to the county. We have sponsors. We'll have sponsor signs, which the sponsors will be going on that sign. This is a permanent sponsor sign, this ain't, you sponsor this year, and you have to go get more sponsors next year, because they did help pay for this sign. And which the high school is going to be helping us putting that together, the frame that goes around the scoreboard to put the sponsorship signs on. That's all I've got. If you guys have any questions or concerns.
Questions, Sean? I have no questions. Mr. Chair? Phil? No questions. With that being said, then we need a motion and a second to accept this.
You can motion approve it.
You recommended bid of Nevco?
Okay.
Nevco, okay. I'll second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All those, any other discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries for over. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. And I'm sure the kids and parents will.
Taking care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of it. Yeah, especially with no cost to the county. That sounds good. It looks like Ms. Jennifer Green is up next.
For having us back, I want to say thanks to Heather, because she spent some time with us after the last meeting. And we wanted to give you a little bit of an overview. And I guess first up, thought it might be helpful if Heather wanted to comment on the background behind the opioid settlement, just to give you all our few reminders, since this started a while ago. So Heather, I don't know if now's a good time for you to chime in, but happy for you, too.
So I'm not sure how much you guys are really familiar with how this all worked out. But Allegheny County joined class action lawsuit. And this is the one, this is the first settlement which we joined for Johnson &amp; Johnson. That settlement, the, I want to say, the Attorney's Association, County Attorney's Association, along with the County Commissioners Association, got together. And they came up with a global settlement for the entire state. And every county joined on to that, which was really good for the state, because it allowed in that negotiation for more money to come to the counties and municipalities, versus more of the money going for administrative and state funding, I guess, which is really nice. So when we signed on to that, the ultimate settlement that we ended up with out of that was $960,330.59. Now, that's payable annually. It started out for 18 years. So we've received some of that money so far, and it'll still come in every single year. When we signed on to that memorandum of agreement for this statewide settlement, we agreed to this Exhibit A. The Exhibit A example was very broad. It was not as detailed as Exhibit B. Exhibit B required a lot more, I want to say, organization and details of how that money was going to be used. And of course, since we weren't sure exactly how that would be handled by the county and different agencies, we figured that Exhibit A would be a little bit easier for us to be able to handle, because it was a little bit more just broad categories. Now, that's what we did for the first one. The second one is coming up, and that's a settlement between Teva, Alleghenian, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens. That settlement, we're going to handle it the same way. They want all 100 counties to sign on to it, and I think the same funding amount will be available, not dollar figure, but the same funding schedule will be handled. It'll be a settlement starting this year through 2036. Allegheny is projected to receive $768,723.27. That would be in addition to that $960,000 that we have already been scheduled to receive over that time period from '22 to 2038. So this will be just additional monies that we would have to report for, for the different programs that we would get involved with and potentially approve for funding to help with the opioid crisis. So we are working on that. That one is coming. There will be an additional resolution to get on to that, to agree that we're going to handle that settlement. And I think they want that done before May. So we will be back to ask about that, for the resolution to sign that additional settlement. There's additional litigation that's still out there that has not been settled, and I don't know how that's going to end up working out. So there may be something that comes back, but I'm not sure how that funding schedule will go. So that's something that's still out there on the horizon. But this is the next settlement that has happened, and this is the amount that we'll receive. And the way, I think Jen's going to explain a little bit more about how we're going to handle this going forward. Because even though we've got this memorandum of agreement, now what we need to do is figure out how we're going to fund different programs with this money to help with this crisis. And this potentially comes through grants that the county would agree to. And there will be a resolution for each individual grant that might be approved. There'll be a group that will, you will appoint to be involved in reviewing applications that the public might come forward with for approval for the funding. So this is where we are right now. It's quite a bit of money. The thing that I think is very important is there will be schedules of how, when we have to report, who gets the money. And there are metrics that things will be measured by. So this is not just us writing a blank check to people, and then not having an accountability later, which I think is probably one of the most positive things to come out of this settlement, is that we have to see results in order to continue funding these different types of programs that might come out of this.
If you go to the next slide, sorry, I think this is an old presentation. Anyway, I may have sent you the wrong version. The areas for funding, I'll just read to you. Collaborative strategic planning is one of them. This was all in that Option A that you mentioned, Heather. Evidence-based addiction treatment, recovery support services, recovery support housing, employment-related services, early intervention, and I know Commissioner Irwin, you asked us about that last time, naloxone distribution, that's the drug that reverses overdose, a post-overdose response team, syringe service program services, criminal justice diversion program, addiction treatment for incarcerated persons, excuse me, and reentry programs. So all of those are part of Option A. That can be included in the proposed next steps for funding programs. So our next steps that we wanted to talk through was just to review the RFP process. Yes, thank you. So if you review the RFP process, and the RFP is just a shortened word for a grant. So we have a draft grant application that's pretty short, but as Heather mentioned, would provide the county with some basic information. So if someone is interested in providing a program, they can write in here what it is that they want to do, how it aligns with the options that the county has already said that they want to do, and how much money it's going to cost to do that program. And so we thought that that would be the next proposed step, for you all to review that, and then determine who might review the grants submitted. So if other community partners or agencies wanted to apply for this money, obviously, you're going to need a group to review. I might recommend that you have the county attorney, county manager, maybe Drew, you may want to participate, too. But at least one commissioner, maybe two, depending on what you want to do. You may also want to have a person who participated in our group session. We had two peer support specialists who actually have lived experience. I think their input is pretty valuable. You also may want to have someone else, like Lisa Osborne, who works in human services, for example. So whatever the group that you wanted to have, I think, would be helpful. And so we thought that that would really be the next step. And then beyond that, obviously, promoting the grant, having an information session where people can ask questions about it, giving them enough time to apply for the grant. And then, as Heather mentioned, coming back to you all to make a recommendation from the committee. And then, obviously, the next steps would be working through the MOU that the county has to adopt for that. And what we're recommending is that the projects start in the new fiscal year in July. That would give us enough time to put out the grant information, make sure people have time to review it and apply for it, and that the committee has time to review this proposals. Did I miss anything, Heather, from there? So if you go to the next slide, sorry if you slide on down, I must have just sent you the right slides. I'm sorry, Drew. So this right here, proposed budget breakdown, this could be different, depending on what the committee decides. But we thought at least you may want to start with some of the initial amount of money. As Heather mentioned, you're getting payments about every year. So we know that this amount is available. The other thing is that there's $10,000 per year that the county agreed to support for us to apply for some additional matching dollars. We were awarded those funds through Vital Strategies. I think Allegheny is one of eight counties that got that money. So congratulations to you. That's $10,000 for three years. So as the county commits $10,000 for three years from this fund, you'll get matching $10,000. So it's $30,000 and $30,000 that will go into this project. Proposed in the project includes harm reduction, so syringe service programs to help link people to treatment, and then some of the prevention work and education that we've talked about in the past, as well as naloxone distribution. So trying to make sure that more people have access to that reversal drug. That's so important. But that amount can be subject to what you all want to do. You may decide to do more. But I'll defer back to you all. We have the draft grant. I don't know if that's in your packet, but we do have that, if you want to see it. And we're happy to answer any questions, or take any direction that you all have, in terms of what you want to do next. Excuse me.
Michael? Questions, Greg? Go through that $10,000 again. How does that work?
So we came to you all and asked for support to apply for the Vital Strategies grant. The Health Department applied for that grant. So along with Allegheny County, Ash County, and Watauga County also contributed part of their funding. So in total, we have $70,000 from our three counties. And the Vital Strategies grant is going to provide $70,000 in matching funds for three years. So it's a pretty significant amount over time. It will allow for us to have additional peer support specialists to work in the community. And part of what they will be doing is helping do outreach and syringe service programs, which we already participate in with a partner called Olive Branch Ministries. I think John Simmons has come to this board before and given you some information about that. that. You know, the goal of what we're trying to do is prevention, prevention at the early stage, but also intervention when someone is actively using. One of the ways that a peer support specialist can help is help them, link them to treatment, and also prevent things like needle shearing, which can cause other problems, like hepatitis and HIV outbreaks, which we've seen in other parts of North Carolina. So I hope that gives you enough detail. But that's, in general, it's a combined effort between our three counties, and those funds are being administered from the North Carolina Community Foundation to us. So we will just need to work with you all and make sure you have all the documentation you need for that.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Jennifer, you're on here for three different items.
Okay.
So we need to vote on three different items. That would be number five, the proposed opiate settlement. We've heard the presentation from Jennifer. I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, 5-0. Next, or 4-0, I'm sorry, 4-0. Next is the opiate settlement grant, and Jennifer just had finished going through that. Is there any questions? Need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. 4-0, thank you for that. Next is number seven, resolution by the county of Allegheny authorizing the execution of opiate settlement. I believe you just covered the RFP, did you not?
I've mentioned it, it's in your packet. I'm happy to talk more about it, but basically, it's a grant that people can apply for. Our proposed timeline is to issue it March 1st. Do all the promotion, obviously with the county, make it available on websites, and host an informational webinar so people can have questions answered about it. And basically, we would be helping compile all the information for the committee to review.
It's all in the resolution.
Yep.
All in the RFP. She's talking about the RFP now, not the resolution.
Yes.
Any questions? We need a vote.
You've already voted on it.
Not on that one.
You've already voted on it.
Anything else?
We need a vote.
The last one is the MOU, Heather, is that?
It's the resolution for, this is for us to join in that secondary settlement for that additional $768,723, and this would allow either Michael, I would say Michael, or myself to sign the paperwork for that settlement, like we did the last time, for the initial settlement. So this is a resolution approving that settlement and for us to join in with it so that we can receive that secondary group of funds.
Go ahead, Michael.
Heather and I have had a conversation about that also. And one thing that I mentioned and maybe briefly explained, this money can go towards groups or associations or affiliates, but we're awarding those funds too. She and I had a conversation because nowhere in this resolution did I see any provision or thought for the possibility of a clawback should there be something amok with that group. I'll let Heather further define that, but I'm used to seeing clawback provisions when you're dealing with public funds and a distribution amount in case they don't meet what the performance allows for.
I would agree. I think that that's a good idea, that we could add that.
We can add that. And do you want this, does the board want to approve that Heather and Michael do the signing?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion, Michael?
I just want to know what the motion is for. What, I get the signing.
Heather just said that you all can sign it.
So we can include the provision for the clawback and then be authorized to sign it? Okay.
That's what you're after?
Yes, sir.
You got it. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed, likewise? Okay, now you got it. Your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Friday.
Yes, see you Friday.
I think Jennifer, in the earlier part, wanted, if we're going to form any kind of committee, if anybody would like to volunteer, when we get to that point, speak up. Next, item number eight, and that would be Michael Carter.
At an earlier meeting, I had brought up the consideration of appointing a deputy clerk for the remainder of the current calendar year. That would allow for, continue what I would call fluid work to continue in the absence of our appointed clerk. And I have a letter of, I guess it's a recommendation on page 48 of your packet, but to sum it up, I have recommended to the board the consideration of appointing April Ham as the deputy clerk for the remainder of the calendar year.
Any questions or discussion?
A motion that we accept the recommendation, Mr. Chair?
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise? Thank you. You got it, 4-0. Michael, number nine, RFQ for the courthouse.
If you recall, and Commissioner Greg, I'll go back right before you came on board. We were awarded a $2 million grant, SCIF award from the state, for renovations and improvements to our existing court facility. And we have went through a facility study that we had, we took an RFQ for as well, and a group, R&amp;D Architects, was actually the awarded engineering architect firm that did that study. And basically, what they did was assess the status of the courthouse, identify deficiencies within it, take suggestions on maybe some improvements from the court system, from the county staff, et cetera, and they compiled that into a report. That facility study does not allow for them to go into design because it is of a nature that not only is monetary, but the scope of work is different. So in order to move this project forward, we are now ready to go into the design, construction, management, contract administration portion. Again, to stay within the provisions of procurement, I've put together this RFQ that's included in your packet, and would like to have approval of the board to put this out, to receive submittals from qualified engineers and architects to provide their qualifications. And then we convene a meeting, I would say, of the Facility and Grounds Committee, or whatever, I think that's the name of it now, to review and interview those qualified firms to recommend to the board at a later date a recommendation on whom we want to do the design and construction and contract administration. This is the first step in that process.
Questions, comments? You've heard the request from Michael Carter for the RFQ. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Likewise, disapproval. You got it, 4-0. Next is Michelle Lufman.
The nominating committee met, and we received a couple of board appointments, recommendations from different boards. The first one is the JCPC board. They wanted to recommend Brant Wilkins, who is the court counselor supervisor, be appointed for a two-year term on the board of the Allegheny JCPC.
If not, I need a motion in a second for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, 4-0. Next is Michelle again.
Also, the nominating committee discussed the Allegheny Soil and Water Board. They have an open position on the ag advisory board since Chelsea Bobbitt was moved from a member to ex officio member. The board has recommended Bill Osborne to fill this position. This will be a three-year term.
Any discussion? Any questions? You've heard the recommendation from Michelle for the Agriculture Advisory Board. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise? Thank you, 4-0.
I made no motion.
Somebody needed to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought we had.
Second.
Yes. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same. Thank you. To April Ham.
I have a few budget amendments and line item transfers for you this morning. The first one is in conjunction with the building repairs that's being done at 90 South Main. The county manager actually requested some money upfront to help with the cost of those repairs, and that's what this budget amendment is, $100,000.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same. Motion carries, 4-0. Thank you, April. Go ahead.
The second one is General Fund Amendment Number Four. This is actually adding the money to the EMS budget from the revenue from the quarter cent sales tax. This was a discussion with the previous board. I know that Commissioner Walker was not in that discussion, but seeing some of the proceeds come in from the sales tax now, we kind of know what we're going to be receiving from that, a general idea. And we had a general idea upfront and an estimate. So with that additional sales tax money, the decision was made to add two positions to EMS and change their, what we used to call Chinese overtime, to a regular overtime for that staff. So this is what you have in front of you. We are adding $116,150 to the general fund budget and specifically to the EMS budget.
You've heard the recommendation from April. Is there any discussion? I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. You got it.
I'll change the subject. Did we find somebody going to take Linda's place up there yet, or?
We do, we have some interviews scheduled, yes. The next one is General Fund Budget Amendment Number Five. This is actually taking some revenue out of the budget. Law enforcement applies for a GCC grant every year, Governor's Crime Commission grant. They were not approved for the full amount of the grant, and we did not know that when the budget was approved. So this is taking the revenue and the expense out of that budget.
Heard the recommendation from April. I need a motion in a second.
How much is this, we're taking out?
Just a minute. Go ahead, Greg.
How much are we taking out?
They're taking out $46,707.
To approve, Mr. Chair?
In a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, likewise?
The next one is actually an EMS, just a line item transfer. We need to transfer $7,500 out of part-time EMS salaries to cover the EMS emergency overtime. Emergency overtime is when we actually have full staff that volunteers to work another shift above and beyond what they're working, and we have that categorized separately.
Any discussion, questions? Need a motion in a second?
Same.
Second.
Got a motion. Got a question, Michael.
Just clarification for Commissioner Greg. About a couple of years ago, we set a limit on $4,000 for an interdepartment transfer without board approval. Anything over $4,000 is why you guys see it. That's why we're doing this today.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries, 4-0. April, go ahead.
And the last one I have, and Randy is present for any questions, is for, it's a line item transfer from full-time rec salaries, because they didn't have the two full positions for the whole fiscal year. We also have one person in that department that waived hospital insurance for part of the year. So there's money available there to be able to transfer to capital expense. And Randy has found a used side-by-side ATV to be able to use on the disc golf course and Davis Field, and possibly other rec venues, correct, Randy? Talking a total amount of $8,150.
Where are you getting ATV from?
Found two. One is a dealership over in Galax, and one's off an individual. The reason that we're needing a new side-by-side, the one we have now, the four-wheel-drive part of it is tore up and parts are no longer available for that unit. And to work on the Frisbee Golf Course, you have to have a four-wheel drive.
We put the old one up for salvage and sell it, you know, surplus.
That, or we could, you know, on special events, whatever, other areas, like if we're working down at Veterans Park, as far as that goes, because it still runs, it'll still go, it just has no front or rear drive shaft. We have to have it locked in four-wheel drive all the time for it to go, but it is still, you can drive it, it's just not, you can't go, if you get it uneven at all, it'll just sit there and spin.
Any other questions? I got one about the, how much is this going to be used on the disc golf?
We have to maintain, for one, the trails. You know, we have to go up in weed eaters, we have to, you know, do that stuff. We was actually in the middle of setting new baskets, and that's when it tore up, and we couldn't get up there to, you know, finish up the baskets. It's a very steep course. That's why you have to have a four-wheel drive. And to, there's no way that you can carry weed eaters, gas, strings in on that whole course. There's just, you know, no way. And then, of course, we drag Davis Field, and we do girls softball when we got our baseball program going, so she's for both of that, too.
Just golf course at?
Here at the Lions Club, straight in behind and left of the Davis Field. It's one of the old Lions Club walking trails and all that was, basically.
A lot of people go to that?
We're getting, well, in the summertime, you know, which I started late summer, so I probably didn't see a lot of use that was used, but I know we have in May, 1st of May, a tournament, tournament coming up. And I know the last one they had, they said there was an absolute ton of people that came to it also. So still trails and courses that we have to maintain, as far as weed eating, the areas that grass grows in. that grass grows in.
Do you know how much time or expense is spent on the disc golf course? Have you ever tried to keep up with it?
Well, like I said, you know, I started at the very end of June, and so I got kind of towards the end of it. So I do not, to answer your question. We, when I first started, we did, you know, at least once a week, go up there with weed eaters and, because these, a lot of these trails, you got grass going back through that we have to keep weed-eated for the trails that goes to the, to golf.
Just for a little history, I know that golf course has been around now several, several years, and I don't know that, I think one time they had an opening tournament that several people attended. Other than that, I don't know if it's a well-kept secret. I just never hear much about it.
The problem that we've got, Mr. Chairman, is we don't advertise it. I know I was getting fuel when I had a gentleman come up to me and ask me how to get to the Frisbee Golf Course. We have no signs directing people to there. You know, he wanted to, he wanted to go to the Frisbee Golf Course, but he couldn't find out where he was. If he hadn't asked me, he wouldn't have known how to get there. We've got to have some signs.
I thought it was on your recreation website.
It is.
And would it not be a good idea to advertise it on the, the county, our billboard at the fairgrounds?
Community TV.
Absolutely, we can. Would be no problem doing that.
I just look at this, I think we've put a lot of money into it.
Yes.
I just want to be sure that people have the option to use it, and if it's not going to be used, we may need to revisit this.
Well, and, and, you know, I do have that on, as far as the signs and stuff that is on the agenda to, that pad up, like I had mentioned in the meeting on that, that, some signs to allow people that does know. And, you know, hopefully when we have these tournaments, you know, we have 50 or 100 people, whatever we have, that the people that is playing, you know, word travels and, and, you know, we do get busy, of course.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, you've heard the, the request from April for this line item transfer. I need a motion and a second.
I make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed likewise. Motion carries, four oh. Thank you, April. Anything else?
I have today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We turn to Michael Carter.
Get my papers back in order. So I have a couple, more than a couple, comments today. The first one is I just, she may, she may or may not like me saying this, but I want to wish Commissioner Michelle Lufman a happy birthday tomorrow, for those of you that don't know.
Happy early birthday, Michelle.
Twenty-five again.
That's what I had written down. The second one is I think I had sent out something, got a meeting with DOT on the third on some road or bridge projects. If you guys know of anything you'd like for me to communicate with them, just let me know ahead of time so that I can. The RFQ for the pool facility studies, those are, those are in, we've received three. Rec committee, I think you were tasked with the review of them. So you, you two let me know a date that, that suits you both, we'll meet, we'll go You can send them, y'all can talk about it.
Thursday. It's Thursday, four o'clock, your office.
Does it work?
Works.
Four o'clock. Go ahead.
Budget meetings. Budget submittals, for the most part, have been received. For the budget committee will start Tuesday, the, that's the 28th, I believe I wrote that down right. Tuesday, the 28th, 8:30. We'll start that day talking about revenues, and we will also have one department in that day, we'll have EMS in that day, because as we know, Linda is, is leaving, and we want to get an idea on what her budget submittal is before she leaves. But we'll start meeting then. That'll be, as I understand it, Tuesdays and Thursdays, starting at 8:30. And that will likely continue until end of April, first of May. For, I think it's Commissioner Bobby and Commissioner Timmy on that, if I remember right. I'll, I'll tell you upfront, expect at a minimum four hours and at a maximum seven to eight, depending on where we get and how we get there. So that'll fire up next week. I didn't get to say it when Linda was here, but, but I've told her several times, everybody's identified her leaving and the appreciation, but I just want to echo that. You know, in the time I've been here, she's been a stand-up lady. You know, it hadn't always been rosy with, with things that went on in that department, and she was right there in the thick of it. So I just want to thank her for that. I also want to just brag on our staff. You, you get the opportunity to see some of them on a more regular basis at meetings, some of them on a less regular basis, but we got a good group here. And, you know, whether they're providing a service, or they're taking a lashing, or they're doing whatever they're doing, they're a good bunch of people. And I just want to identify and appreciate them for that. And that's all the comments I had today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Start with John, Commissioner comments.
I would like to echo the county manager's comments towards Ms. Linda Edwards. It's 28 years, is a long time to provide service to the people of Allegheny County, and she's done a lot. She, to be quite frank with you, her workload is one that we are going to end, splitting between two people. It's very seldom that you will find someone that will carry that workload for as long as she has and, and done the, the type of job that she's done. So that is commendable towards her. She's going to be missed. Hopefully, we can replace her with someone with, that is just as dedicated and is knowledgeable. Certainly, she was an asset that will be missed. One of the things that I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider is sometime in the future, we need to either appoint a committee or the, some means of going over and bringing that fire commission resolution into the 21st century. I know that the HR rules have changed. There's a lot of things that you could do 21 years ago that you cannot do today. We need to bring it up. One of the things that was brought out, and I brought, I brought it to the attention of David Spicer whenever he came in, I said, are you ready to assume the maintenance duties for all the volunteer fire department vehicles? And we started discussing it. He would have to have an individual to do that, which means another employee. The fire commission, the fire tax, that money is there, available, that could be put into their budget. Right now, it's written in it, so let's, we need, I certainly feel that this needs to be looked at and brought up to present-day standards so that we can make sure that that is done. Just reminding the people of Allegheny County that winter is not over. We've had a warm winter, but those of us that are old enough, and the gray hair proves it, we remember the winter of '60, so it can get, it can get pretty doggone bad until you start to see an April roll around, we could be in for it. Other than that, the race didn't go the way I wanted it to, but I am satisfied with the outcome. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Michelle?
I've got just a few things. Brian Edwards has served our community for a very long time in many volunteer positions, and announced his retirement last week. I sit on a few boards with him, and I really hate to see Brian go, but I understand he's at a time in his life that he, he's ready to, to do a few fun things with the grandkids. So I wish Brian very well, and I'd like to see the county recognize him for all the things he's done for us, so. And with that, Lisa Bottomley will be taking the helm at the, the chamber. So she's going to be stepping into Brian's shoes there as president, so. I just want to say I greatly appreciate all our public servants, our fire, police, first responders, Linda. I had the opportunity to be in a couple of trainings with Linda. She taught me CPR, and she taught me stop the bleed training, and that's one lady who really cares about her job. And she, she's a, she's a great teacher and just a great person. She's going to be greatly missed, so. And the last thing, I, I hear a lot of shade being thrown toward the landfill and on social media, and it really upsets me because I don't know what people expect. Do you expect to go over there and it smell like a patch of roses? I think the landfill has come a very long way in a very short period of time. David Spicer and his crowd have done a great job getting things organized, looking great over there. We have the recycling back up. I mean, I don't know what you want. Maybe we can, maybe we can plant a bed of roses out there or something and make it, make it smell better for some of the outer towners that don't, I don't know what kind of landfill you're used to, but I think we got a great landfill and a great crew, so thank you, David. That's all I have.
Thank you. Greg?
I agree with John, and this fire resolution, it needs to be updated, bad. We need, need to get something up to date on it. And I agree with Michelle, the landfill does a great job. I know they get a lot of flack. I got it.
Thank you. Again, I think what Michael said, I'd like to wish Michelle a 19th birthday again, and a happy birthday. We will sorely miss Linda. She's been around, done a great job for all of us, especially for the people of the county. I think last Sunday, we had the, the snowfall Saturday night, Sunday. My end of the county, the western end of the county, we got hardly any snow. I mean, you could just barely see it. But I think the eastern part of the county got the lion's share. Some people said three, four inches. It's hard to believe that in that few miles, it could be that big of a difference, but my hat's off to DOT. I know that, like Michelle was saying about the social media, there's always somebody that's not going to be happy. I thought DOT did a great job. I can, I can say nothing but good things about them, and I appreciate everything they did. And I will comment on the race yesterday. And there is a commissioner that owes me $5, and I would like to collect that publicly.
Can we take out some account?
I want folding stuff. I don't want change or anything, but I thought it was a good way to start the year off. It was a heck of a race. I, I would like to thank the commissioners.
What, you win by one foot?
I thought we had a good meeting today. I would, one thing I think that had happened last week or week before last, we had a, a person come into the tax office and wasn't pleased about some of their taxes, but I would encourage all citizens to treat our county employees with respect, because our employees treat them with respect. And there's no place, in my opinion, for foul language, for threatening moves, just, there's just no place for that in Allegheny County. And I would just encourage everybody, just, if, if it's something you don't like, talk about it. Don't scream about it. Don't rant and rave about it. Sit down like adults and talk to the people involved, and we can always work these things out. But I would just encourage everybody just to treat people nicely, be a gentleman, be a, be a lady. And with that being said, Heather, any comments? Michael, anything? Mr. Drew, anything to add? With that, I need a motion, second, adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion. Adjourned.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. We're adjourned.